I'd like to make your way over to the chairs. Good evening, I'm Jane Rivard Tefensky and on behalf of tonight's sponsoring organizations, Tri Sigma and Black Duck Education Association, I would like to welcome you to tonight's School Board Candidate Forum. We are pleased to have six of the seven candidates with us tonight. Starting at the end of the table, we have Kurt Gross, we have incumbent Chris Hendrickson, incumbent Rachel Larson, Jacob Leon, incumbent Cynthia Nord, I've Brian Merrill, I'm sorry. Notes, Brian Merrill, and then we have incumbent Cynthia Nord. Tog Anderson, a candidate has, was planning to attend but came down with the flu and sends his regrets and also sent a letter that he would like to have read here. So before the candidates introduce themselves, I will actually introduce Tog here. Tog says, "I would like to apologize for not being at the forum tonight. I originally planned to be here but have been home with the flu for the last couple days. A little about me, I was born and raised in Black Duck, graduated from Black Duck High School in 1998, and now I have three daughters that are attending school here. Kenley in seventh grade, Jessa in fifth grade, and Bria in first grade. My wife Sarah and I own Anderson Insurance Agency right here in Black Duck where Sarah works and sells life insurance and health insurance. We have owned this business for almost four years. I have been employed by the Paul Bunyan Communications as an installation repair technician for seventeen years. I am currently active in the Zion Lutheran Church Council. I have been on the Black Duck Summer Baseball Board for four years and have been president for three. I have been vice president for CWA Local 7272 for ten years and a member for seventeen years. I have helped negotiate our last three union contracts and am in the process of negotiating another contract this fall. I am running for school board because the education of Black Duck students is very important to me. I feel the decisions made by the school board directly affect our students for years to come. I feel we have a very good staff at Black Duck and I would like to have a hand in the continued improvement of our school. As a school board member, I feel it is very important to listen to all suggestions and concerns from anyone in the community. While I'm unable to attend tonight, I welcome any questions you have of me going forward. Thank you for your consideration for school board and feel free to contact me." And then he gives me his cellphone number and if anybody would like it, I can give it to you later. Sincerely, Tog Anderson. The candidates will introduce themselves further in a minute. We are pleased to have Black Duck graduate and local businessman Darrell Lundberg accept our invitation to serve as our moderator. Thank you Darrell.
School Board candidates, you will each have one and a half minutes to respond to a question. Teresa Templin and Carrie Slindy will serve as official timers. When they hold up a yellow card, you have thirty seconds left to respond. An orange card indicates ten seconds left and a red card means you must stop. I will alternate between candidates for the first opportunity to answer questions. Every candidate will be given an opportunity to answer each question I ask. We will have prepared questions which will take most of our time. If time allows, I will take questions from the audience which will be collected and given to me. Audience, please raise your hand if you would like to ask a candidate a question and a card will be brought to you. Please write your question on it and raise your hand again and some will bring it to Ms. Rivard who, if time allows, will give it to me. Because of time constraints, there will be no verbal contributions from the audience and with that, school board candidates, do you guys have any questions? Then let's begin. Beginning with Mr. Gross, please introduce yourself, including your educational background, community involvement, and your main reason for running for school board and we'll work left to right. What was the question again? Introduce yourself, include your educational background, community involvement, and your main reason for running for school board.
My name's Kurt Gross. I got a GED. My kids are involved in the school here. I'm involved in a lot of sports. Oh, this is nervous. Thank you.
Mr. Hendrickson?
Yeah, my name is Chris Hendrickson. I'd like to first start out by thanking the Black Duck Education Association and the Tri Sigma Club for giving me the opportunity to speak to the forum tonight. I'd like to thank Mr. Darrell Lundberg for being our moderator and I'd like to thank all the ladies and gentlemen that are here tonight to hear what we have to say. So my story goes, I was born and raised in Black Duck. I attended Black Duck Elementary and Black Duck High School. I graduated from Black Duck High School in 1996. I attended North Dakota State College of Science in Wapton, North Dakota where I graduated in 1998 with a degree in electrical construction. I then went on to complete my apprenticeship as an electrician and passed my journeyman's test in 2004 and currently I work at Bestler Electric, Bestler We Bolt Electric in Bemidji as a senior service technician. I'm involved in, obviously on the school board here and at St. Anne's Catholic Church here in town. I'm married to Gretchen Hendrickson and we have three children, Aubrey, a sixth grader in the elementary school, Rebecca, a fourth grader in the elementary school, and Cade, he's a preschooler here at the Black Duck School. I've got five years of experience now on the board and it's been a roller coaster ride but all in all, it's been a good experience. And I'm hoping that if the community agrees or thinks I'm doing a good job, that I'll be voted on for a second term. And I guess that's about it. Thank you.
Ms. Larson?
My name is Rachel Larson and I am a 1998 graduate of Black Duck High School. In 98, I went to Morehead, moved to Morehead and went to the technical school there and got my diploma for medical secretary. And then my husband Scott Larson and I moved down to the cities where he completed his dental degree and we moved back here to this area in 2006. And he worked in Bemidji and we bought the dental office in Black Duck and have been here six years at the dental office now. And so we have twins, Garrett and Ella, they are in the eighth grade. This is my third, this will be my third term for the school board. My first two terms, like Chris has said, have been a roller coaster. There's a lot I've learned and a lot I am still learning and would like the opportunity to be able to stay on the board and finish out some things that we've been working on and hopefully, again, if the community thinks I've done a good job so far, they will vote me back in. So, thank you for the opportunity to speak tonight.
Mr. Leon?
Good evening. Thank you, Black Duck Education Association and Tri Sigma Study Club for hosting this forum and giving folders an opportunity to get to know the candidates and how they can help Black Duck School. My name is Jacob Leon. I was born and raised here and graduated from Black Duck in 2009. After I graduated high school, I pursued a degree in network technology administration. I have been working in the technology field since 2005 and currently work for Paul Bunyan Communications. My history working in this field is something that is extremely, I can't talk, sorry, is extremely important in the school systems because it allows me to help ensure that our students are working with and allowed access to the best technology available. As we as a society move more and more into the digital world, it is vital that our students have access to this ever-changing technology. The Leon family has a long history of giving students access to technology and it has become a tradition I've been trying to carry on, whether it's teaching students how to use the school sound systems or teach them how to control lighting from computers or smartphones. In order to accomplish this, I volunteer my time and bring in my personal equipment to allow students the opportunity to learn more about the different technologies and how they can better use them to suit their future needs. Because I work so closely with a lot of the extracurricular activities, I have gained additional insight into these programs and feel that because of all the time I spend with students, coaches, and teachers, I can help ensure that not only they bring additional information forward to the school board, but make sure our students continue to excel in the classroom as well as better position themselves for future success. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Good evening. I agree with Kurt, this is nerve wracking. For those of you that don't know me, my name is Brian Merrill. I grew up in Black Duck and have lived in the area my whole life. My wife Rachel and I have two children, Ethan age fifteen and Addison age ten. Both of our children attend Black Duck School and are very active in school activities. I have been in the HVAC field for over twenty years and this time, I have held many positions. Installer, service tech, estimator, and supervisor. With this experience, I have learned three important things. Number one, how to work with people. Number two, how to work for people. And number three, the value of a hard-earned dollar. I recently have taken a job with Sanford Health in Bemidji and this allows for a little more free time. I would like to use that time to give back to the community of Black Duck and in particular, the Black Duck School District. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nord?
Hi, I'm Cynthia Nord. I've been on the board here at Black Duck for eighteen years. I come from a long line of Black Duck High School graduates from my dad and aunts and uncles down to myself and my nine siblings and my four children. I currently have five grandchildren attending school here with more to come in the future. I have a farm business management degree. My husband and myself own and operate three businesses in the Black Duck area. I've lived here all my life. I have enjoyed my years on the board as, and as Chris and Rachel have mentioned, we've had some roller coaster rides, some major ones over the last eighteen years. But as of right now, things are going very well. We have a wonderful board. We have a financially sound school district unlike a lot of them in the area and we also are looking at climbing enrollment instead of declining enrollment for a change. So it's a wonderful thing right now. Thank you.
Thank you. Go ahead. Yep, go ahead.
Good evening, my name is Kurt Gross. I would like to share a little bit about myself. I grew up in Black Duck, I attended the Black Duck High School. I am married and I have two children. I own and operate my own business in the Black Duck area. I have attended and chaperoned school field trips, been a volunteer, assisted with Booster Club events, fundraisers, and have been a youth coach. The reason I am running for the school board is like many of you, I want to see a change. The school board sets the vision and the goals for the school district and holds the district accountable for results. I, as many of you, have contacted the school administration and board members and have voiced my concerns and frustrations and have gotten little results. As a board member, I would, I will ask questions. I am willing to learn. I will listen to the community and the teacher's voice. I will promote academic success. I will be motivated by the best interest of our students and community. I will make difficult decisions and I want to encourage the staff and parents, community members to call me with any opinions and ideas. Ideas become solutions and I want to, I want the solutions that will benefit our students. I will listen to the public and the staff of the Black Duck School District. Serving as a board member is one of the most important responsibilities that a citizen can undertake. I hope you will give me this opportunity.
All right, thank you. Mr. Hendrickson? What qualities, behaviors should school board members exhibit?
What qualities and behaviors? Well, I think first and foremost, you need to be somebody that's approachable, somebody that can, you know, listen to all sides and, you know, base their decisions on the facts. And I think, I think it's important that, you know, you're seen in the community and you help out the community where you can and when you can and, you know, because that's what makes, makes the community what they are. And so as a board member, I think that's, that's very vital. That's about it.
All right, thank you.
I think it's important for board members to have professionalism and be able to listen to both sides and make a decision, you know, based on both sides. Sometimes our decisions that we have to make, we may not agree with all the time but it's the best decision at the time. I think it's important for board members to know that we have to be, we're confidential employees as we are, you know, employed by the school and, in a way, and we have to be confidential but I think first and foremost that we're professional in the community, in the school, just all around when people see us out and about and to be active and involved in the school as well.
Mr. Leon?
To me, the role of a school board member goes far and beyond what they do in this school. You're a role model to every student that comes through these doors, whether it's a pre-K student, whether it's someone who's in high school, or someone who's ready to walk across the stage on graduation night. We need to remember that we are teaching these students lifelong lessons. So that means that every time you see somebody who needs help in the school, whether that's a fellow employee, school board member, you know, a parent, whatever the case may be, you need to go out of your way to help that person. That sometimes means that it's something as simple as hold the door open for someone. It may mean something as simple as, you know, when you see a kid who does something they shouldn't, tell them what to do next time. Because these students are looking to us for leadership and everything they, we do, they think is not an acceptable means of behavior. Another important member of the school board is you should be volunteering. I mean, we are not only members of the school but we're also members of this community and our community is desperate for volunteers. As every day goes by, the volunteer wells dry up. So we need everyone's help and like I said, if we want the volunteer wells to continue to fill up, we need to make sure that we are helping our students by thinking that that's the way I need to act when I get older. We are a small and close community so anything we do, they think is the acceptable means to move forward with their lives. Thank you.
Mr. Merrill?
Can you repeat that question one more time, please?
I would be happy to. What qualities or behaviors should school board members exhibit?
Well, I think the school board should, you know, first and foremost be listening to the public. That's why they're elected, is to listen to the public. You know, I realize the school board members have to make some tough choices from time to time. You know, the role, I guess, is to, you know, make policy, enforce policy, hire the best people possible for the school district and to stand behind the faculty and staff of Black Duck. And to be the best role models they can in the, in the society or the community of Black
Ms. Nord?
I agree with what most of the people have said so far. You need to be open, honest, available, confidential. You need to learn that we hire good people to bring things to us in order to make an educated decision. We need to trust the people that we hire. We need to be available when somebody wants to make a phone call, wants to meet with you. Being on the school board is a commitment. You have to be available 24/7 basically. It's not something that's just one day a month or one day a week. It's a 24/7 commitment and you need to be there for that and you need to be there in every facet of the education process.
Thank you. We'll move on to question three. Ms. Larson, we'll start with you. What are the current challenges facing education and school boards in general?
Should Kurt have answered?
Kurt should answer, yeah. You can answer.
Well, I wanna, I'd be here for the taxpayers, I mean, and the teachers. I want the best education for the kids that we can bring for the kids. And, I don't know, I just, it should be more about the kids and the education and all that, I guess, and listen to the taxpayers and the teachers, whatever's gonna make it better at the school and stuff for everyone, so, yeah.
All right, thank you. Now we'll start with question three.
Will you say that?
Yep. What are the current challenges facing education and school boards?
Specific to the school or just as a whole? I mean, I guess right now, I think as school, it's enrollment, keeping, you know, keeping our numbers up in our district and I think all schools are facing enrollment crisis right now, you know? Every district is down in enrollment and, you know, I don't know if we know the answer, the why answer to that. We are fortunate this year, our numbers are looking really good and we just hope we can keep these, keep the kids in the district. So I think our small class sizes really helps us in this district. Was that, was there another part to that question, Darrell?
No.
Is that, okay.
Go ahead, Jacob.
I think some of the biggest challenges facing education, as we're all far too aware, student safety is one of the biggest concerns in the entire country. I feel our school district has done a great job of keeping our students safe. This last year, you know, we made safety precautions with the entrances for both the high school and elementary. You know, that's a great step in the right direction but student safety is something that we all need to take upon ourselves. Each one of us when we're in the school, we need to look out for the safety of our students. You know, something as simple as fights that take out, we need to make sure that we're stopping those, whether you're a parent, teacher, coach. We just need to make sure we're making sure our students are safe. And if you see something that looks suspicious, say something. Another thing that I see just being at events all the time is activities around the school. We have great support from coaches and certain parents have always been there to help but those same parents help with every single activity. So we need to make sure that we are out there helping in every activity that we can. That may mean we need to go out and find people to help with activities so those people that are helping all the time are not getting burned out. We also need to make sure that our teachers are getting the adequate resources they need to succeed in our school district. I feel we've done a great job in the past but we also need to make sure that we're looking at changes because every day we get new students that come through this school, we need to make sure they're given the resources they need to succeed. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
You know, as some people have already mentioned, enrollment's always an issue and it has been for many years off and on for Black Duck. And, you know, I don't know how you go about getting more enrollment. That would be something we'd have to, if I was elected, we'd have to look at and try to boost that. Another common problem, I believe, in Black Duck is with our education process. We need to adapt and change for the best possible education for our students, whether that's offering different classes or different programs or education tools, adding something of that nature. And, you know, from an outsider looking in on the school board, I don't know all the ins and outs of what, what there is for challenges. You know, Cynthia and the rest of the school board members up here can better enlighten you on that stuff because they've, they've had to deal with it for eighteen years or however long. And I hope that, you know, if I'm elected, I can help with that process and continue the great education at Black Duck School.
Thank you. Ms. Nord?
As we've said before, declining enrollment has been one of our number one issues but also federal and state funding is another issue. We never know what we're gonna get till the last minute. It's really hard to plan ahead when you don't know what our government is gonna do. Safety has been another issue the last few years and as Brian, or Jacob mentioned, we did a lot of new things in our school this year to help make our kids safer. I think it, I think parents are getting used to it. I heard that it was a little bit challenging the first couple of days of school but they're getting used to it and I think if they realize that we're just doing it for the safety of their kids, it will be good. But as Rachel pointed out, for some reason this year, we had a tremendous jump in enrollment which is a great thing. We're just hoping we keep them all. So far, it's looking really good. But as I had said before, the funding is another thing. We never know what we're gonna get when and you have to just kinda wing it sometimes.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
I don't, I don't really know what all happens on the board but I'm willing to listen to the community and stuff and the teachers and just try to get whatever's best for the situation and I guess I really don't know what goes on totally but I'm willing to learn
Mr. Hendrickson?
So, you know, most, there's been a lot of, a lot of things pointed out, enrollment, safety, funding. One I'd like to add to that is technology. I think that's an ever-changing piece to the puzzle that we have to look at alongside of the other aforementioned items. And, you know, just whatever other challenges that we don't see yet, we need to figure out as they come at us, so, thank you.
Thank you. Beginning with Mr. Leon. Let's agree that we all want our school to succeed in educating the children of this district. What does, what does our successful district look like to you in three to five years?
To me, for our school to succeed, as everyone's been saying up here, open enrollment, of course, is one of the biggest concerns. For our school to succeed in the next three to five years, we need to keep making sure that our open enroll numbers are going up because every student that comes through here, we need to make sure they are being given an experience that makes them want to come back here year after year. We've had students over the years that want to transfer and we want to get those numbers down. We want when students come in here for pre-K, kindergarten, first grade, so on and so forth, that they want to stay here. We also need to make sure our community support stays strong. Yeah, the school's a big part of this community but we also need the community support because if we don't support the community, how can they support us? Another good thing for our school to succeed is that we already have great teachers here. We've been lucky enough for most of them to call this place home for their entire teaching career. So that means that a lot of these teachers are getting older and older and as these teachers look to retirement, we need to make sure that we're looking for replacement teachers that not only look out for the best interest of our students but are also looking out for the best interests of our community and want to be a part of this community and want to make sure that our students succeed. As we said earlier, another big thing is technology and we need to make sure that we are giving our students the best technology available so that they can succeed in future jobs or college. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
I guess in the, in the next three to five years, you know, we, we need to keep the enrollment numbers up. We need to look at what we can do to make Black Duck a desirable place to send your kids and keep the kids here once they are here. We also need to, again, adapt education to help these kids for the future, whether that's in technologies or the trades. The trades in our area and all of the Midwest are gonna be a great demand for people and I think that's a good way where Black Duck, they've done a good job with that in some of the construction trades and I think we need to expand that along with the technologies
Thank you. Ms. Nord?
What I see in three to five years or what, how I would like to see our district to continue to be successful is maintaining our high test scores, also maintaining our small class sizes. That has become a goal of our current board and our previous board was that we have small class sizes. It's a proven fact that our kids receive a better education when they're in a smaller class, especially in the early years. Another goal would be that we have a financially sound district as we do right now. We were able to pay off a loan that wasn't due to be paid off till 2026 this past year to save the taxpayers almost $90,000 in interest over that time period. So that was a huge success for our board now. Another thing is... Another thing is, in another year, we're gonna be looking at making the decision about the four-day week, and we may have to approach the legislature again and fight for it if we so choose, and I think that's been a huge success here at Black Duck. This year is our ninth year with it, and we just need to be able to prepare our kids for the real world.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
You know, I'd like to see more one-on-one with these kids, because one of my kids had a lot of one-on-one with one of the teachers in elementary, and it was huge for him. I think, I think we need to see more of that with the kids that struggle a little bit more than others, and enrollment numbers need to keep going up, but we need to have something that draws the kids here, too, and the parents. Otherwise, they don't wanna, you know, they can move down to Bemidji and go to bigger schools and stuff like that, but, all right.
Thank you, Mr. Gross. Mr. Hendrickson?
So, you know, there, again, a lot of, a lot of good points have been made that I, that I would've, would've liked to have said, but obviously, I couldn't. Well, a couple of things I'd like to add is, I would like to see us continue to have high, high graduation numbers in these classes. It seems like that's been a very good thing for our school. We've always hung our hat on that as well. And, also, I think, looking forward, I think a successful district would be if we have families or individuals that graduated here coming back to this community to raise their children, and, and showing them, and giving them the success opportunities that we have here. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larson?
Ah, when you're last on, everybody's kinda taken what you wanted to say. I, I think, I think it's moving forward in the direction that we are in right now. We are maintaining a lot of good things right now, from our budget to our enrollment, and, and keep letting it grow from here forward. Community support to the school. If we don't have the school, we're not gonna have a town, and, and both have to work together, from the businesses to the school, and just keep doing what we're doing to move forward, so.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill? We're gonna add a little question quickly here. What is your position on the four-day school week, and will it, will or should it continue?
Well, I was gonna save part of that for my, for my closing, but...
You can reiterate your answer, then.
You know, I, I, I think, I think we need to, to, to look at and take a, a better look at the four-day school week. You know, there's a lot of times when, when our kids would get home, and they're exhausted at the end of the day from, from the four-day school week, they're shot. I would like to take a better look at, how much education time are they really getting in this longer school day? You know, and where are we really saving the money, and, and on whose back are we saving that money? And speaking to some of the business owners in town, the four-day school week has been devastating to them. And what worries me is what, what in education is gonna happen to these children down the road from the four-day week? Is there any consequences to it, and what will there be? I, I know some parents like it, some, some kids like it, some teachers like it, you know, and I think we need to take a better look at it and, and see, I understand financially, it probably works for our school district, but in the end, we have to look, educationally, does it work the best for our school district? Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nord?
Same question.
Same question.
I'm having the same problem. All of my, these things have been taken from my closing statements. As you probably all know, I've been an advocate of the four-day school week since we started it. I believe it's been a good thing for us. From the first year on, our test scores went up, and in response to something that Brian brought up, we actually have fifteen hundred and twenty-six more student contact, teacher-student contact minutes in a four-day week than we do in a five-day week over the course of the year. So, there actually is more time with the students. Financially, it saves us right around a hundred and fifty thousand dollars a year, so that's a good thing there, but I think our test scores prove that it is a good thing for our district.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
Well, I'm all for the four-day work, or school days. I think there's a lot of farm kids in this area, and it gives them time to be around the farm and other kids at work, but I would listen to the community, too, and see what they have to say about it, too. I mean, it ain't just up to me, I mean, it's up to all the taxpayers also, but, but I'm all for it, so.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrickson?
So, when, when this was talked about a few years ago, I'll be honest, I'm, I'm kinda on the fence on it. I, I mean, I see the advantages to it. It does us save money. The kids do get, I think, as much time as they need, or more time with, with, with the teachers. There's a lot of, there's a lot of sides, arguments that I've heard against it, too, that I can't dispute all, all of those, but, I mean, the way I look at it is, if the, the community, the parents, and the teachers are willing and wanna support this and want this, as a board member, I can't deny that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larson?
I am an advocate for the four-day week. You know, in the beginning, when I, my kids first got into school, yeah, it was long days, it was long days for them, but I also thought about, when I was at work, they were also at daycare the same amount of time, or, or longer. And as they've gotten older, they get home late at night, but I think our school has done a fairly good job with the homework aspect for these kids, and not giving them a pile at night, for the most part, you know, waiting, or through the week anyways, and they get it on the weekends, and they have that extra day to get it done. As a business owner in this community, I know there's a lot of back and forth on that. I can say, ourself personally, we are inundated that day, and it's because that day is off, and we have, you know, teachers that aren't taking personal time to take their kids to the dentist, or the doctor, whatever, and, and we see our day at our office full because of the four-day. When Brian asks about how it saves us money, besides transportation sub-cost, is where we've also saved a lot of dollars on the four-day. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Leon?
So, I was lucky enough to be the last graduating class that had the five-day school week. So, I kinda followed this closely, 'cause I was just curious, you know, what a difference it would make for students that graduated after me. So, kinda talking with students that graduated even one, two, five years after me, everyone talked about what a big difference it made with getting more one-on-one time with teachers. So, for me, that was kind of an interesting fact, that we went to the four-day school week, and they got more time and less homework, because they were getting time with the teachers, figuring out everything, they had questions with during the day. So, because of that, for me, that's enough to hear that this is something we should keep doing. It seems like our success rates are still going up. Like Cynthia said, the test scores are going up every year. We're also seeing where students are being allowed more time for jobs on Mondays. I mean, you see around town, there are more kids working on Mondays. It's important that they're getting experience in the workforce, as well as in the classroom. So, like I said, I am for the four-day school week. Thank you.
Thank you. Beginning with Ms. Nord. The Minnesota School Board Association recommends that a school board has three purposes: make policy, set the budget, and hire administrators who actually manage a school. As a member of the school board, what do you see your role being in relation to? A, the community? B, the administration? And C, the collective, collective bargaining units? You will have three minutes to answer this question.
Well, as far as the community is concerned, I think the board needs to be available to the community, and if concerns are brought to the board from the community, they need to be addressed. We try to hire the best administration that we possibly can. We, at this place and time, I believe we have an excellent business manager, an excellent superintendent. They bring things to the board, we discuss them, we look, we trust them to know what they're doing and to bring these things to us, and then we collectively make the decision. Can you repeat the first three things?
On, of the first part, just...
The first part.
Yep. The Minnesota School Board Association recommends that a school board has three purposes: make policy, set the budget, and hire administrators who actually manage a school.
Okay, thank you, that's all I needed.
Okay.
As far as the budget, our, we trust our business manager and administration to do, to bring that to us, and then we approve that. As far as policy goes, MSBA makes a lot of recommendations, and we tend to go with them, with their recommendations most of the time. Every once in a while, they need to be tweaked a little to fit our school district, but for the most part, it's usually beneficial for our district to follow what they put out there for us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
Well, I would listen to the community and make the best decisions for the community For hiring and stuff, the staff, or whatever, I guess, like Cynthia said, you gotta listen to the superintendent and, and Josh Ziegler also. And then just try to make the best decision on who to hire and stuff, but, yeah, I mean, Josh, I know I just listen to him talk sometimes, he, he knows where the money's at, where's it going, and I know nothing about that stuff right now, 'cause I don't see that side of it, you know, but, but I'm, yeah, I'm willing to learn a lot, I guess, and, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrickson?
So, as a school board member, on the community aspect, yeah, you need to be, need to be able to hear what the community is, is in favor of, and use that in your decision. But it's not, not, you know, the answer. Also, for the administrative side of things, yeah, we, as a board, you need to just gather as much information about the people that are looking to be hired, and any, any feedback, good or bad, use that to your advantage. And from the collective bargaining side, a lot of that, too, you know, your, your financial personnel needs to be upfront and open with you to, to help you make the best decision for the school. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larson?
From the community aspect, I think it's important to listen to the community's views on, on whatever topic it is, and take that into consideration when we are making decisions. Sometimes our decisions, we have to listen to the community, but sometimes because of confidentiality reasons, you know, we, there's a lot of pieces that are missing when we're, that we can't say when we're making our decisions, or as to why we've made a decision. As far as administration goes, it's, you know, the board's job to hire the best possible administration that, that we can find, and it's, we look to them to take their advice, and we just, we help support administration in, in decisions. And when it comes to the financial piece, if anyone has ever sat down with Josh Ziegler, he will confuse you, but that is a piece that you just, it's, it's very confusing, very complex, and you need, you need good administration and a business manager to run a district like we have here, and they've done an excellent job, so.
Thank you. Mr. Leon?
In regards to the community, kinda like I said before, you know, we need to be setting an example for these students, but also, as a school board member, you are a representative of the community. So, like everybody said, you need to be able to listen to what the community has to say, because you need to be accessible for all of them to say their concerns. You also need to listen and bring that forward to the other school board members, as well as our administration staff needs to listen to that. So, because of that, we need to work closely with administration, because we need their support on every decision we make, and we also need them to carry out any rules or regulations that the school board passes. So, in those regards, we gotta hold the administration accountable. In regards to collective bargaining agreement, kinda how I see that is that we're in, kinda responsible for negotiating wages, for hours, the terms and conditions of those contracts. So, because of that, we need to also look out what's best for the school district, as well as look out what's best for our facility staff and our teachers. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
I, I think, you know, as far as the community is, is concerned, we need to listen to people and take community's advice and concerns. Without the community of Black Duck and the support of the community, there's, there's not gonna be a school district here. I think the board has done a decent job, but I think they could do better on some points as far as listening to comments and concerns from teachers, parents, staff, and other faculty members. As far as the administration, you know, they've already nailed it on the head, you know, hire the best people possible and listen to those people, and, and take their comments into consideration when making choices, and, and make the best choices for education for the kids, 'cause that's the number-one goal, to do the best education possible, to give the children the best education possible that we can.
Thank you. Beginning with Mr. Gross. There, there are three mandatory school board trainings plus the MSBA conference, which train members on how to be a good school board member. As a member of the board, how important, how important is it that you keep current with state legal issues and would, and follow MSBA's recommendations for school boards? Would you attend these workshops?
I would attend these workshops and learn more about all this stuff. I mean, yes, I would attend them, so.
Okay. Thank you. Mr. Hendrickson?
So, yeah, having served on the board already and taken these trainings, and, and gone to the conference, it, it's very vital. It, it's hard to explain how it helps you as a, as a member of the board, but you come away with a lot of insight, perspective, and just general knowledge of, you know, how to make the school function the, the way that it should, and, and work well with, with the community around you. So, I would attend these workshops, again, if, if, if so asked. Thank you.
Ms. Larson?
The conferences, yes, are very, very important. The first three that you go to, I think it gives you a, a big picture of how a board works, and it gives you a pretty good understanding. And as you go through your term on the board, every year, we go to this conference, and, and we, we each pick a couple sessions that we go to, and I think all of us, we all go to different sessions, and we all come back with something that we've learned in our session, and we've been able to use it, maybe in discussion, 'cause we've had a topic come up. So, any opportunity that we can get to go to something, I think it's always helpful. The more information you get, the better.
Thank you. Mr. Leon?
I think the Minnesota, or the Minnesota School Board Association training is extremely important, 'cause to me, it's setting the foundation for what you're gonna do as a school board member, or just any interaction within the school with students, staff, and even administration. I feel it's a good way for someone like myself, who'd be new, to gain insight into the responsibilities of a school board member. I feel like for me, it teaches me about things that are gonna happen over the next term, and figure out how I can best perceive forward. Like some of the other people said, it helps stay current with rules and regulations within school districts. I feel like there are changes throughout school districts, and if we go to these trainings, that we can learn what other schools are doing, and whether those are working or failing. I feel like these trainings can also help provide leadership for every one of us. Kinda like everybody else said, you know, none of us are perfect, so we need these trainings to figure out what we can do better as a school board member. 'Cause at the end of the day, we're making the best decision for the school district, and for me, personally... And for me personally, I would without doubt attend these trainings, because it's important for not only the school, but the community that is supporting us. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
Yes, I would attend, uh, workshops and anything educational that I could, to make myself the best school board member that I could be. Um, you know, it, that's where the, these people that are on the school board have an advantage, they, they know the ins and the outs, uh, of a lot of this stuff, and you have to stay current, laws are changing, rules are changing, and, uh, I would take every advantage that I could to, uh, to be educated on the, all of the aspects of that.
Ms. Nord?
I have attended Phase One, Two, Three, and Four training, and attended the MSBA Conference in January, seventeen out of the eighteen years I've been on the board. Um, and it's crucial that you attend the first four trainings, uh, they're a real eye-opener if nothing else. Um, you learn what you can and can't do, um, and boy, there were a lot of things that you think you can tip over the world, and you go to training and you find out, no, that's not happening. So, yes, it's very important to go, as Rachel said, every year that we go to the MSBA Conference, we come home with new and different things. I don't know how many of you are familiar with our March Madness program, but that was a program that we brought back from the MSBA Conference and took it to our principal, high school principal, and she got it going, and, so that was something that was a tremendous success for us. But there have been numerous things over the years, all the way from bringing new things back for our food service program from the trade show there, just all kinds of things like that. So it's very beneficial and critical that all board members attend. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrickson? If you were going to prioritize educational programs, which would be your highest priority? Some of the areas might include early childhood, lower elementary, upper elementary, middle school, high school, a range of course offerings, college prep, et cetera.
Well, if I was gonna prioritize, I guess, I feel that, uh, getting children, um, all the advantages and all the help that they can get when they're young, when they're in pre-K and, and, uh, lower elementary, is, uh, very vital. It seems to, um, help them as they mature and move through, uh, through the school. Um, it's, uh, it's been one thing that our current board has, uh, has kinda saw and latched onto and encouraged, and, uh, and I encourage it right along with them. Thank you.
Ms. Larson?
I would have to go with early childhood, too. I think if, you get these kids a good foundation, you hope as they get older, it stays with them, and once they get into high school, it, because they had such a good foundation in the beginning, it, they'll just grow, and, um, so I'm, I'm with early childhood.
Mr. Liam?
So, this might be me just being naive, being new to the school board, whatever the case may be, but I kinda feel that all age groups are important. Like I said before, pre-K through senior, we should be giving all of them the same equal opportunity to succeed. We have students that come through these doors that are behind their fellow classmates, we need to make sure that we're giving them an opportunity to catch up to their fellow classmates, as well as students that come to the school that are already exceeding expectations. We need to make sure we're giving them the tools to succeed as well. Um, and because we're in open enrollment, we're gonna have students show up all the time, we need to make sure they're beginning the same equal opportunity as their classmates. I mean, of course, we've got classes like math, science, and English, we all understand those are super important for kids as they move on towards college, or just careers in general. But what about the kids that walk through these hallways and wanna be a construction worker? We need to offer building trades classes for those students as well. Uh, we've got students that come to this, these hallways that wanna be an artist, and so we gotta provide art for them as well. Um, 'cause at the end of the day, um, every student, whether they are in pre-K or all the way up to senior high, we need to offer them everything they can, so they can be the best that they can be. Thank you.
Mr. Merrill?
Well, I guess, you know, I agree with Jacob on that. I, I guess I don't know that I would prioritize any grade or level above another. Um, education at all levels is, is important, so I don't know, y- y- you know, that you could priori- prioritize, uh, first grade versus fifth grade. Um, I think our, our school does a good job with education, um, but I, I think there's always room to improve at all aspects. Uh, I believe we can, can or should expand educational opportunities, uh, for kids' future, whether it's a building trades class or home economics class, um, we, we do a good job, and, and they started the, you know, the construction trades project where they're building the house, and that, that's great for a lot of these kids, but I think we could expand on that a- and give these kids a leg up for their future, once they leave these doors, to be a, a beneficial part of the community. Thanks.
Ms. Nord?
As some of my fellow bu- board members have said, I believe we need to start early with small class sizes and teaching our kids the basics from the bottom up, um, reading, writing, math. They need to have the basic foundation in order to be successful later on. Um, when they reach the hu- higher grades, I think we need to concentrate on credit recovery, making sure all of our kids are in line for graduation, and we have a, a quite a large special ed department here at Black Duck, a very good one, I might add, and I think those kids need to be given all of the opportunities that our mainstream students have, and they need to learn the basics, just like the rest of them, and be able to go out in the world and lead a successful life. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
Well, I think it all starts with the early childhood, I mean, to make sure that they're ready for kindergarten, 'cause if they go in kindergarten, they're be- already behind, they're just gonna keep struggling through school till they can get caught up there, but, and I think, uh, yeah, I just think early childhood is the most important to me anyways.
Thank you. Ms. Larson? Where do extracurricular activities fit in your educational philosophy?
I think edu- extracurricular activities are a great thing, but for me, they're, they're a bonus. Um, academics is my priority, um, and extracurricular important, it's great that kids can, you know, we give them the opportunity that they have here in Black Duck, even though it's different than Bemidji, they, they still have quite a bit of choice here, but academics is priority for me.
Thank you. Mr. Liam?
Um, extracurricular activities, to me, were meant to develop the student to their full potential. To me, extracurricular activities are just one piece of the puzzle that they should be receiving while they're in our school. Um, while they're in competition, we should be teaching them not only to be competitive, but also the safety of the game, how to respect fellow teammates, and just how they should act within the game, you know, showing respect to your coach, you know, not yelling at officials, those types of things. I mean, yeah, we all wanna win, and losing's no fun, but at the same time, it's about learning life's last, life lessons. The key to good extracurricular activities is a good coach and great teachers, and I feel we have that here. But in order to keep moving forward, we need to make sure that we are instilling with our students that it is just that, an extracurricular activity, where it's an extension of the classroom. Um, I mean, we gotta remember that any time they're with a teacher or coach is a potential, basically, classroom situation, so they need to make sure that they are respecting their coaches and fans every time they step onto the court or stage, and that any time they put on that uniform or walk across the stage, they should be bringing honor to the school and showing respect to their fellow classmates. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
Can you repeat that one more time, please?
Where do extracurricular activities fit in your educational philosophy?
You know, I, I think extracurriculars are important to make a well-rounded student. Um, but, I, education is obviously first and foremost and should be in the school, but the, these, a lot of these kids have a great opportunity, whether it's in, in speech class, football, uh, basketball, drama class, to, to make themselves a well-rounded student. Um, you know, some of them may follow a path with that in the future, and i- it's just a great, uh, uh, another advantage we have in the small school, that, that kids, whether it's sports, or drama, or speech, that, that they get to be part of that. So, I mean, i- it helps the kids be, become a well-rounded student, um, and, you know, whether it's band, or whatever it may be, that also helps them in the classroom, uh, with that as well.
Thank you. Ms. Nord?
I as well believe that the education of our kids is first and foremost for us, that's what we're here for. Excuse me. But I do believe that extracurriculars, at some level, are a privilege, and that students need to earn that privilege, and it also is an extension of the classroom in the respect that they learn sportsmanship, teamwork, respect for their fellow teammates, um, it's all part of it, but I don't believe that the extracurriculars are the most important thing for our school. Education is still number one, that's what we're here for. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
Well, I think, um, education is the most important, but I also think that sports will make the kids even want to succeed more and respect their coaches and teachers more. And, um, and I just think it, it helps the kids just wanna be at the school even more, you know, and, and, uh, they could get the best out of the kids and make it fun for them, 'cause how fun is it just to come to school and just have school and not have any sports or nothing? I guess, if you have sports, the kids will enjoy it, you know?
Thank you. Mr. Hendrickson?
So, I, I, uh, I believe that, uh, extracurricular activities are, are value- very valuable. Um, I think that, uh, you know, for those students who, uh, who come to school and, and, and try hard at school, um, sometimes it's a, it's a good outlet. So with, with, with that being said, um, I think, though, that, um, um, extracurricular activities is a privilege, not a right, meaning they need to, to show us that they can, um, you know, be a student, student first and an athlete second. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Liam? How important do you feel it is to visit the classrooms to gain firsthand knowledge of what is happening in our school?
Visiting the classroom, to me, is an extremely important part of the school board, because, yeah, we can take the administration or teachers' word on what's going on in the classroom, but the only way to really know what's going on is we need to visit these classrooms. I mean, we have to trust the teachers and administration, but at the same time, like I said, we need to see these classrooms, I mean, not necessarily every day, but checking in twice a year just to see how things are going. Not only that, see how they're treating our students, you know, we wanna make sure every student is treated equally here. You know, we don't want any students that are, you know, basically left behind. So, basically, for me, it'd be extremely important for us to continue visiting classrooms. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill?
I guess, you know, at this point, um, I, I don't know how important it would be to visit the classroom, i- you know, we've all made points up here about hiring the best staff, uh, that we can find, and I think you would take it at their word, uh, and I, I'm not saying don't stop in or ask somebody how they're doing, but y- uh, the sitting board members have already said we're hiring the best people possible, why do we need to go in and supervise them in their classroom? Um, you know, and I honestly don't think by checking in twice a year, you're gonna see how they're doing. Um, we apparently already have great test scores, so I don't know why we would need to go check in the classroom and, and see how our, our, uh, students are doing, or how our teachers are doing, or how the students are behaving in class. Um, again, we need to listen to the faculty and staff on that, and our, our test scores are gonna show, uh, the students' grades are gonna show. Uh, I guess I don't see the, the, the need to visit a classroom, um, to take into consideration what the faculty and students and parents and the community has to say about the educational process in Black Duck. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nord?
As I said before, we hire great administration, and that's what we hire them for. Um, I don't believe it's the board's job to spend a lot of time in classrooms or micromanage. Um, that's what we hire th- them for. Um, it's fine to stop in and say hi, see if there's any issues once in a while, if you happen to be in the school for a meeting or something, but as far as spending a lot of time in classrooms, that's not the board's job. The board is, the board's job is to maintain a good financial situation for the school, to enforce policies, um, things like that, and we hire our administration to spend time in the classrooms. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gross?
I guess I don't feel it very important to go see unless there was a problem that had to be looked into, and I guess I would go talk to the superintendent about it, just to kinda get a feel of what's going on at the school, I guess, but I guess I wouldn't go in there out of the blue just to see, you know, so, thanks.
Mr. Hendrickson?
So, as was said by Cynthia, um, the micromanaging piece, to me, is, is not, uh, not the way a board member should, should, um, approach, approach the classroom situation. I think that, yes, you should, you could make yourself present through the school, not make a special trip, uh, unless absolutely necessary, but even at that, um, the board needs, needs to, to act as a board, not as an individual. Um, so I think, I think it's, uh, I think visiting the classrooms is not, not that important. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larson?
I feel as a board member, it is not my job to be in the school micromanaging the staff in here. Again, like Cynthia and Chris have said, that is what our administration has been hired to do. Um, I think being present, um, the staff knowing that they can call me with anything if they need to. Now, if I've been in the school and I see a classroom doing something kinda neat, I'll ask if I can look in, not to micromanage the teacher, but to see what, what they're doing. I think it's more important to stop in on something like that versus coming in and checking up on a teacher, so.
Mr. Merrill? We have a two-part question here. Our current board policy is a closed forum, where anyone wishing to speak at a meeting needs to register a week prior to the meeting. Do you feel this is an effective line for open communication between the board and the community? And the second part of the question is, how can we strengthen the relationship between our community and the school board?
I'm starting to think Togue had it easy with the flu. The, the closed forum part of the meeting, um, and you must've looked at my closing statements already, Daryl, because that was-
[laughing]
I'm pretty much just gonna sit up here when it comes to that. I, I don't feel the closed forum is appropriate, especially for a small community like Black Duck. I think if somebody has a comment, concern, complaint, they should be able to voice their opinion at the school board meeting when that's taking place. I, I think that their, their opinions should go unfiltered, uh, it shouldn't have to pass through channels or pass through avenues to get there. You should be able to, if you, if you're a community member, uh, parent, teacher, taxpayer, you should be able to come to the school board meeting and voice your opinion. Um, people that are on the school board are elected, are elected, they should have to listen to the constituents and hear what they have to say. Um, and as far as strengthening the relationship with the community, um, you know, Black Duck's a small town, we, we have a good, uh, the, the community gives a lot of support to the, to the school district, um, whether it's for donating for sports activities, or, or building projects, or people donating, uh, their time for athletics or other events. I, I think we do a good job, but I think we can always do better. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nord?
I'm gonna address the closed forum part. We don't actually have a closed forum. Um, there is a part at the beginning of the meeting, um, for comments from the public. However, there has been a board policy in place since many, many years before I was ever on the board, that we were not aware of, and we are now just enforcing the policy that was in place. And there is a reason for it, and the reason for it is, if you notify the superintendent prior to the meeting requesting to approach the board, then the board and the administration has time to get answers for you. So they, they know what's coming, they can get the answers, so we have the answers for- answers. So we have the answers for you at the time. If there's something that's as critical as needing to talk to the board right now, we have special meetings, we have work sessions, anything that can be, those kind of things can be addressed at. As far as with the community, people in the community need to be aware that they can contact a board member anytime when they've heard something, when they have a question about something, and get the answer from the horse's mouth instead of rumors that are flying around the community. That's the best way to do it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Gross.
Well, I'm all for listening to the community if they want to come to a board meeting and speak. I'm all for it. Give them the time to talk. We've done it for the last 18, 20 years. I don't know why. It just had to stop just the other month there. I don't think that was very right. But why not listen to the taxpayers? I mean, that's what you're there for, to listen to the taxpayers and the teachers and everyone in the community here. And, yeah, it's just, I don't know, I just want to run for the community, and it's not just for me. It's just, I want to listen to the community, what they have to say and stuff. So, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrickson.
So, yeah, as Cynthia said about the closed forum, it's not really closed. We're just, as the board stands now, they're, they're enforcing the policy. And I truly think that if somebody has a big enough concern, or gripe, or whatever it would be, that they can email, call, text somebody, and let them know that they want to address the board at the upcoming meeting. And that, that's all it would take. And we're still, still there to listen and, and take, you know, take whatever advice or concerns that they give us. And I think, you know, the school, the board tries as hard as we can to be as open with the community as we can. And I feel that we do a pretty good job of that at night now. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larson.
Again, this would be redundant. Cynthia explained the closed forum. It's not really closed forum. But again, if there's a big issue, I want to be prepared to be able to give an answer to the issue at hand. And when you're at a board meeting and you've got 100 questions being fired at you, and you're kind of going, ah, we have no answers, I said, it doesn't leave us in a good spot as a board. So I think allowing the board to be prepared is a good thing. Again, like Chris said, to, you know, call us whenever, text us, email us. However, you know, if I'm not away with my family and doing something that's family time, I will get back to, to that person. As far as strengthening the relationship, I would really like to see more community members come to our board meetings, other than when there's an uproar of whether it's an athletic problem, or whatever the problem might be. It seems like athletic is the hot topic usually, and when our board meetings are full. But come all the time. I think that's a good way to stay informed of what's going on at our board meetings, and not just when there's an uproar with something. There's always information to be had at them, so.
Thank you. Mr. Leon.
I think the closed forum is the proper way for us to handle all school board meetings. Like everyone said, administration or school board is approachable at any time. So don't wait until there's an issue and wait till the last second till it's going to a vote to voice your opinion. Like they said, you can email or call anybody at any time. And kind of like Rachel said, if people are attending these school board meetings at a better rate, they know about these things before they're going to a vote, so it doesn't need to wait till a last second vote. There are plenty other meetings where you can reach out to these people, too. I mean, yes, as a school board member, we want to hear from the community, but it needs to be organized. School board members aren't in here every day. So for them, this might be news to them. So they needed to research and talk to, you know, administration, or talk to the teacher about what actually happened in the classroom or on the court, whatever the case may be. So we just need to make sure that we're keeping this closed, because board needs to be given proper time to look into all issues. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Nord. How important is a minimum GPA to be eligible for extracurricular participation?
That one, I think, is very important. I think if kids, students have an incomplete or they're not maintaining at least an average, a C average grade, that they need to bring it up to that in order to participate. Students with an incomplete or a failing grade should not be competing. They're missing the most important reason they're here. They need to have those grades up and be where they're supposed to be before they're allowed to participate.
Thank you. Mr. Gross.
I think it's very important, but the kids that want to be there are going to keep their grades up. And we'll try extra hard to keep it going. But, yeah. But yes, it's very important to have a good GPA and no, you know, C average. I'd even like to see better than that. But, yeah.
Thank you. Mr. Hendrickson.
So, yeah, the minimum GPA is a, is a very, a very good tool to have there. Sorry, I'm just trying to think this through a bit. So, as I, as I said earlier in the other question that was posed about extracurricular, you know, extracurricular activities, they're a privilege. I look at them as a privilege rather than a right. And our students need to be students first, and to make sure that they are getting the education that, that we are giving opportunity for them to get. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larson.
I think it's very important. You guys heard me say academics is my priority. And again, extracurriculars are called extracurriculars because they're, they're extra. They're not, they're not a right. They are a privilege. And again, if you want to be a well-rounded student, you need to be able to maintain at least a minimal GPA and, you know, and do your sports, too, as well. So, very important to me.
Mr. Leon.
Just kind of reiterating on what everybody else said, and kind of back to what I said for my extracurricular statement. They are students first. I mean, they're called student athletes for a reason. That means the classroom needs to come first. If you're not succeeding in the classroom, you shouldn't be allowed to play on the court. I mean, there's just no way around that. We're still trying to make these individuals into well-rounded students. So that starts in the classroom. Because being in sports is just one piece of the puzzle of education. It's all about learning on the court, too. It's not just about going out and being the best athlete you can be. You're about growing yourself as an individual. It is exactly just that, a privilege to be extracurricular activities, and we should treat it as such. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Merrill.
You know, I guess I don't know what the current policy is in Black Duck right now. When I was in school, I think you had to have all your, all your stuff had to be turned in. You had to have a minimum passing grade. And, you know, that's what it should be for these students. They should have a passing grade. Their incompletes should be turned in. Like everyone has said up here, education has to come first and foremost. And extracurriculars, you know, they're great for the students. They're a great opportunity for them. But the education has to be the strong suit. That's what, that's what the school's here for. And, you know, as long as a student is maintaining the school policy, they should be allowed to do the extracurriculars.
Thank you. Mr. Gross. If Black Duck continues a four-day week, four-day school week, what are your thoughts on homework?
Well, maybe not so much during the week, but on the weekends, yes, they should have some homework to do. Some of these kids get home pretty late, and they're pretty tired after long days. And the ones that are in sports, I know. My kids sometime don't go to bed till 10 o'clock because they're, get home at seven after sport, 7:30. Then they got to do their homework. I mean, it gets pretty late during the week. But on the weekends, I'm all for it. It's good for them. So, thanks.
Mr. Hendrickson.
So, yeah, I think that's, that's the way it's being handled right now, is that, you know, homework comes home on the weekends. And during the week, they kind of get a break from the homework. They do the class, work in class. So I, I'm in full support of that. I think homework is a good thing, but it, it doesn't need to be what these kids, you know, have to come home from school or sporting events and work till, yeah, the wee hours of the morning to get done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Larson.
I think homework on a four-day week, keeping it at a minimal through the week is a good idea. And sending it home, not saying that they shouldn't have anything through a week, but I don't think they need an hour, hour and a half worth of homework every night through the four-day week. And then, you know, I think, okay, on the weekends. That is why they have Mondays, is to get some of that done.
Mr. Leon.
Just kind of to reiterate on what everybody else says, I agree that more homework on weekends is probably the best way to move forward with it. I mean, don't abandon all homework during the week, but use, like they said, Saturday, Sunday, Monday to do extra homework. I agree with more class work during the week should be done during the class time, because we've got that extra time at the end of the class period. But basically, long story short, just more homework on weekends, I think, is a successful means of approaching this. Thank you.
Mr. Merrill.
You know, I think it's, it's tough to judge as you're listening to people up here about homework. One student may not have any, the next student has an hour or two. And every student is different. I think we do a good job at minimizing the homework during the week. You know, my son, Ethan, has very little homework during, during the school week. And he's a straight A student. Where our daughter, she has homework every night, and she gets good grades, but she works her little butt off to do that. And I think that the staff at Black Duck does a good job. You know, I personally am not in favor of the four-day school week 100%. I would like to look back at some other stuff that goes along with the four-day school week. But I think, you know, the homework load is not overpowering for the students. I think the staff does, does a fairly good job with that.
Ms. Nord.
Having been on the board when we went to the four-day week, the board was quite adamant at the time that we went to the four-day week, that teachers were not to send homework home during the week, or very minimal. And that homework was to be sent home on weekends only, and that that was not to be excessive. Some people thought that that meant if they were only sending homework home on the weekends, that they would just be totally bombarded with it. And that was not the board's intention. It was not to be excessive.
Thank you. Any other questions from the audience?